Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First is approval of today's agenda.
Second.
Motion on the second to approve today's agenda. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of minutes from the October 1st, 2019 minutes.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor of the motion to approve the October 1st minutes?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of payment of bills and bill share.
I don't see any yet.
And I don't believe we got them in our emails, so.
We didn't get anything.
So if we can just, I prefer to wait.
Can we just send a message down to them?
Yep.
First item is presentation on referendum and future plans for Dilworth, Elton, Glendon School District.
You can come up here.
You wanna, you wanna, you wanna just take a minute to...
Get your bed.
Yeah, that's right.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is my new development.
Oh.
So, couple things that, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for coming, Brian.
Bringing everybody up to speed a little bit. I've got extra copies I don't need.
Thanks, Brian.
You bet. Couple that in there. I'm gonna give all the handouts right now.
Sure.
And, one last, the bill share. Okay. Again, thanks. It has been, it's been quite a journey over the last three years with this process. When we, back in 2014, as we were looking at, how do we, how do we make, how do we ensure that we have the facilities for the growth of the district? There had been a study done in 2010, which identified potential future growth. The one thing you didn't take into consideration was whether the growth was going to be residential growth, or whether it was going to be growth because of open enrollment.
Right.
And, as I think we can all recall, we had about an 82% disapproval on that vote. I remember it well. So, we took a step back, and took a few months to really start asking some questions. And, what we learned from that experience was, there were certain factors that we had to achieve before we were ever going to ask a question again. One was something that we felt we could work on, and that was the boundary adjustment. So, I gave you a copy of it because I wasn't sure, it's something even people that live in Dilworth still ask me questions all the time. I get phone calls every summer on this. And, so what took place through the administration and the school boards, I thought everyone went in, and we had, we had the city administrators from Morehead and Dilworth, a lot of people involved in this process. And, we, we looked to come up with, we gotta come up with a plan that's gonna be a win-win. This has to, if we can come up with a plan that is going to help growth in both of those communities, natural growth, then we've got a good basis. And, so you can see what, in general, land that the DGF school district gave up is in the blue, because of the national growth going to the south and the east with Morehead. And, otherwise the same issue is gonna happen in 30 years. Brandon knew it, and Lynn knew it, and so we wanted to see that. And, of course, there's nothing we could do about things that took place in the 1950s. But, the old Dilworth School District was by the old Dilworth City Limits, one mile by one mile. And, completely surrounded by, because they didn't want to do rural busing. To cut to the chase on it, it created issues as the city of Dilworth grew. So, the east end of Dilworth, even though it was just blocks away from the school, was Morehead School District. So, as we had growth, you have a problem, because they're gonna have to be open enrolled, and you may not be able to let them in the district. So, that was a major issue. In fall of 2014, we had 170 kindergarten students, going from a school that had 1,300 students, projecting 1,800, 1,900 by this time. No way it could meet that capacity. So, the vote went down, we took steps to control open enrollment. The school board has created policies on open enrollment capping. That's something I wish I would never have to have experienced, those phone calls to parents. But, it is what it is, and, and now we have a system in place. So, the way it works now is that we do, we are able, because it's in statute, that these last four areas that you see on the east end of Dilworth will transfer. It's in statute, it's just how much time it will take. And, two of them transferred back in 17. The, the plan is that once there is within 10,000 net tax capacity of growth in the properties that Morehead received, within 10,000 the NTC of the next section. When that gets within 10,000, and on July 1st, that next section will transfer. Because what it will do is, at that time, we have it down to two or three cents difference for, for a $200,000 house, for tax impact on either side, because we didn't want to see a tax impact. So, that's in place.
Is that on the, is that, that's on the general, general operating levy? When you say that?
It, it is on all the debt service.
Okay. Okay, you talked about tax capacity.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the net tax capacity of the two school districts.
Yeah, okay, alright, okay.
So, because of it, because of debt service being based on net tax capacity, and in school districts, operating funds, the excess levies and what else not, those are on the RMV only. So, it doesn't have the egg land.
Right, right.
But, the NTC is, is for anything with the buildings. So, it, it really allowed, so that no one would see harm on either side. So, we feel really, we feel good about, it may take 20 years.
Right.
We don't know. So, that's where we're sitting as far as districts. And, I bring it up partly because I think this was a great example of how school districts, you know, we've gotten past the, oh, we want these kids, you want these kids, we're combining for, this is to educate kids, in general. And, taking a broader approach, what's good for one is gonna be good for the other, let's create win-wins. And, that's why the Career Academy. I, I have absolutely no doubts in my mind that the Career Academy is gonna be one of the, I, I told the Dilworth City Council last night, in my 35 years, this is the most exciting potential development that I've been involved with. Because I, I see it having such long-term effects, not just education K-12, but we're talking about adult education, retraining, spurring growth within Clay County. The potential of, as families are looking to move, are they gonna move to Fargo, to west side or the east side? They have to be living in Clay County to be able to take advantage of this opportunity. And, so, it's something, whether they build in Morehead, Dilworth, wherever, those kids in long-term plans, those families are going to have their kids be able to have those experiences and, and those opportunities. So, we did not, once we knew that the building, Sam's Club building was gonna be able to be purchased, it really changed the foundation of how we were putting our plan together. Because we knew we weren't going to have to be spending the funds to put in our industrial tech and our career courses, ethically and in sight. So, it allowed us to make it much more efficient. And, after 25 to 30 years, it was time for our DGF residents to no longer be looking at, what is Dilworth getting, what is Glendon getting? Safety and security, it's the number one factor that came out of our task force. Task force in 2016, we had 25 members, we wanted to make sure we had residents of Elton, Glendon, and Dilworth. We wanted to make sure that we had business, commercial, agriculture, empty nesters, parents with kids in the system, and you name it. So, we did that. We made sure, I wanted, I wanted 80% of the task force to be people who voted no. When you're out in that, when you're on social media and, and, and what else not, throughout that process, I thought, no, we're gonna own this thing, and just live with it. And, in the end, this plan ended up having 100% support from the task force, and within, we surveyed our, all of our district staff, 180 staff, and within 24 hours, we had 120, which doesn't happen, you get 66% or 67% in 24 hours responding. And, 92% of them responded favorably on this plan. So, it's come together. The big thing, of course, is we are reorganizing the district. The Dilworth site will be elementary only. So, we'll be doing a preschool through grade four at Dilworth. It allows us, again, because equity was a, a major factor in this, we have always struggled, since I've been at DGF since 2010, struggled with equity in our numbers at the elementary level. The Glendon site may have 14, 15 students in sections, and in the same grade level, at the Dilworth site, we'll have 23. And, so, it is an equity issue. And, by moving all of the elementary to the Dilworth site, it allows us to have better interactions, just elementary kids together, much more equity ratios are the same, nobody's losing a job, it's just making it more equitable. So, in, in this plan, both buildings, you'll notice, if you know the buildings, both buildings, we've turned around completely the entrances. If you look at the insert in the, in the middle, the Dilworth site, presently, the south end of the building is, is the main entrance. And, anyone who's ever been in Dilworth at 8:00 in the morning, or at 3:00 in the afternoon, knock on wood, but we've, we have had two students that have been bumped by vehicles since I've been, but nobody, nobody's seriously injured. But, everybody's double parking, dropping off, picking up, trying to get to work, so it is, it is not very, it is not the most safe. We've had a Safe Routes Schools study that was done, and received a, a one out of five on, at the light at Highway 10, which is absolutely the worst it could be. So, this will have a huge positive impact. We know in Dilworth, fourth is one of the busiest, you can go from the west all the way across Dilworth to the east, and this way, people will be able to come in from the north side, from the west or the east, come right into the parking lot, the entrance, drop off, and go right out on Highway 10. So, it's the first time we'll have off-street drop-off. So, it will now provide the capacity. This plan is set up for 150 students per grade. Initially, early on, I, I had a lot of comments and questions from people, wondering if this was gonna meet capacity as there's growth. And, what I, I love data, and I've gone back through 2002, studied all the courts of students and grades, the largest, the most, in 2003, the resident population of DGF was 1313. In 2018, in the fall, the resident population of DGF, with Summerwood and Woodbridge now being in the district, is 1,300. So, 270 of the 275 square miles are declining enrollment. We serve approximately 100 students per grade, residential. So, it provides natural growth, residential, for 650 more students. So, we're, gonna be over 300 homes will have to be built. And, once people understood that, and knowing that we're going to have the capacity for that growth, for a minimum of 20, 25 years, is what we're looking at. Our bond is for 22 years, the main bond, for the 31 million. There is 9 million that is board-approved. The reason for that, the separation, is it allows us, school district funding is, Minnesota school district funding is, it is rated as one of the most complex of the states, because we have such a, they make changes based on the metro, and then, of course, greater Minnesota complains, and there's another formula that's added on to it, so there's at least 20 different formulas affecting the NTC and RMV, and whether it's calculated based on the amount of resident students or the amount served. So, it's all varied. So, what we, what we've done is looked at ways, how can we maximize state aid? And, by separating the 9 million out for the indoor air quality issues, so they can be climate controlled finally in the buildings, that allows us to maximize state aid. Of course, the other absolutely essential thing that had to be accomplished was at the state level, the egg to school. And, the fact that that is now at 50%, the, the tax impacts that you're seeing in there are all based on a 50%. We want to be conservative, we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible with stakeholders, so we put it only at the 50. We know that once it goes to 70, it goes from 50, 55, to 60, to 70. Once it hits 70, that impact is about $2.50, will be under $2.00 an acre. So, it, it will not have any difference for residential or commercial, it's only the egg that has that. But, the fact that, in comparison, the same acre of land in 2015, and what's just ironic, the ballot question in 2015 was for 31,500,000. So, it's almost identical. But, that same acre of land was just under $10.00 an acre, actually. And you had two here now. So, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely been a much more pleasurable fall than 2015 was, and it's been fun to talk to, to our parents and the community members about, you know, we have a lot of people excited about the, the Career Academy, and, and how some of those things are expanding for kids. And, we have some other longer-term plans, like I showed you a map of, for Glendon, the reason for that, that is not in the bond, but that map is what we're doing long-term projecting, as we're doing expansion of our athletic fields. We did not want to put anything in that was gonna be looked at as being extras, that would take away from the potential of passing something that was absolutely critical for the education system. So, we have purchased land, and you can see where that softball complex will be put, we were able to make an agreement with the landowners, and purchased the land all the way to the Cooley, did you see there?
Where you have proposed road expansion?
And, the proposed road expansion that we're absolutely hoping. Right now, you know, we're talking about the second-largest high school in Clay County, and there is absolutely no way to go directly from the building, as you see, we're, we're moving, changing the entrance around to the west side. And, there's no way of going directly west from the building. And, somewhere between 70% to 80% of all the traffic that comes to that building comes from the south or the west. So, it is an absolute critical. And, of course, if, you know, it's a bonding year, so we're hoping that it is something that is very favorable, we know at the, the regional level for a project because of the safety concerns. Because right now, people have to go through residential, if they're going to the south, or trying to get to interstate. So, it's, it is not very conducive. And, as we continue to grow, and we know where the growth is, growth is only on, on the west end of the district, it's gonna be critical to get that, that accomplished. And, we're hoping the, the funds from the state would cover the cost of, of building, building the road, the rest of the road. You know, then it's a question of, down the road, at what point does it, does it get asphalted and all of those things? So...
So, so that, right, the plan for that right now is to seek state funding for the road project?
Yeah.
It's not included in the bond?
No. We, we, we didn't, you know, to be brutally honest, especially with open enrollment, the way that that works, we have, we have 400, we have over 400 students that are open enrolled into the district. So, we were over 500, but we, we have over 400. And, so the idea of asking, you know, residents of one district, when the state opened up, open enrollment, for building roads for a school, just doesn't, I, I, I struggle with that.
Well, I, and I, and I guess, from that standpoint, I, you know, certainly from our, we've talked about this, you've been at our highway tracking meetings, and we've talked about this, and, and I think, from our standpoint at the county level, we'll do everything we can through our highway engineer and everything to, to support...
That'd be wonderful.
...efforts to get the funding for that. You know, I see it as, as more than, than, I mean, the, the safe routes to school is extremely important, but also there's, the investment into that road would also lead, I think, to extra economic development for your community, for those communities, and I think that's a great thing.
I absolutely fully agree with you. You, you look at how the athletic fields, the football field is right there, when people try to get out from the games, and you think of people coming from, whether it be Barnesville or the different places, they're trying to get out that direction. And, so, there's, there's safety issues. I think many of us remember, it was actually the spring before I started, when the student athlete from Durham collapsed, and, train, they had an issue with the train getting there. So, this is, it's, it's, it's an absolute critical piece, and, and the fact that we're, you know, the, the safety and security is the number one, and by putting the entrances on the opposite sides, getting it off the street for drop-offs and what else not, this is going to be a, you know, we're, I'm cautiously optimistic about the vote. We've had very good feedback, but we've been, I think we have had at least 20 different listening sessions, and basically had things out at every event we could possibly have. So, and going to each of the city councils, and...
Do you have any other, any questions, or any questions for...
I just have a comment. I know that it took a lot of work to figure the land swap piece out, and I, I really wanna commend you and the school board for, for hitting that head-on, because that was something that was, that needed to be addressed, and it, and I appreciate the fact that it's, it's tiered, and it's equitable for the different districts, and I think in the end, it'll make much more sense for everybody. And, so, to address those inconsistencies is probably the most important piece, and then you can go forward. So, thank you for not going to the voters without addressing what their concerns were. I think that's...
My wife would've shot me.
Yeah.
Did not want to go through that again. I, I, it was, it was interesting, I, I was asked to present that process at, at an, for New Supes, and when they saw how many spreadsheets, because we, it was somewhere between 25 to 30 different ways of trying to get the calculations, the mix, and I mean, because everything was down to every single plot of having the value, and figuring out, how do you move this stuff? And, Mark Sloan was tremendously important in that process. He was wonderful.
You're wonderful.
And I've learned more about your GIS system than, and I love it.
Kevin, you have something else?
Yeah, I wanna start. Brandon was here regarding, and gave us an update too, on the Morehead School Bond issue, and, and I mentioned during that time, this, this Career Academy is really an exciting, really, really exciting opportunity, you know, to give these, I remember back in high school, I was not sure what I wanted to, to do, and, and to, you know, if we would've had those things back there, there's probably, would've made decisions for a lot of kids easier, and, and probably faster understanding of, of what it is they really like. And, the fact of the matter is, is a lot of those things that are in those Career Academies now are, are very good-paying jobs...
Very much.
...that come out of those, those, you know, those types of, of careers versus years ago, maybe it might've, you know, it, it might've been, oh, this is for the people who can't handle other things, but there, there's some really good opportunities. So, but I didn't ask Brandon, so, you know, you mentioned that all, all school districts in Clay County will have access to the Career Ca... How is that...
Long-term.
Long-term, okay, okay.
Because what'll, what'll happen is, we're, and probably November 6th, actually, we're gonna be meeting this week administratively, but, so, we have to wait to find out, did Morehead's pass, did ours pass? If, if Morehead's, let's say Morehead's doesn't pass, and then what will happen is, it'll slow down the stages. We will, in this transition time of two years, we will be utilizing that Sam's Club, for instance, we do all of our ALC now with Morehead. We're trying to look at ways, how can we look at our services and make them as economically efficient as possible?
For the public, can you say what AL...
I'm sorry, we're acronym crazy in education. Area learning programs, so students that may be behind on credits, so they go to an area learning center. And, so, we have our DGF students, we work hand-in-hand with Morehead, we actually do targeted services for our elementary students through the ALC umbrella of Morehead School, of maps, and, but it's at our site, and so, Morehead, all we do is use them as a fiscal host, and they get 10%, it saves everybody some money. So, it becomes very efficient with that. We're looking at even our community ad, are there things that we can do? For instance, in the city limits of Dilworth, 42% of the net tax capacity in the city limits of Dilworth, it goes to Morehead School District.
Forty-two percent.
Forty-two percent. So, we serve all of the students, whether Morehead serves, we serve, why don't we look at expansion of community ad? We, we advertise for many of the programs Morehead has, for our DGF residents. It just makes sense, instead of having all of that extra levels of bureaucracy, streamline these things, it'll help everybody from an economic standpoint, it'll, it'll lessen the costs, and, you know, Brandon and I are very smart on that.
I guess I was, I was wondering about the, the financial component of it.
What'll happen, what'll happen with that, Kevin, is, is what DGF will be doing, and, and that's something that we're, we'll just negotiate through. and that's something that we'll, we'll just negotiate through. DGF will utilize lease levy availability, and so when we're looking at the deferred maintenance costs of maintaining the building, so Morehead will have some of their other specialized services in that building, but part of that building will be for the Clay County Collaborative, or the Clay County, not Collaborative, for the Clay County Career Academy. And what'll happen is, this'll come in stages, it might be initially that it's directly with the trades, but one thing we want to jump on board as soon as we can is, is on the Health and Human Service on the medical side. When I was working as administrator in Northwest Minnesota, this isn't new stuff, you know, this was going on back in the seventies and the eighties. We had, when I was principal of March County Central up at Three Fur Falls, I had students, and I think I've told you, some of you this before, but I had students that would go to Northland, they would get their CNA and they would get their LPM while they're in high school. I'd go to graduation on a Friday night at Northland and give them a diploma on Sunday. So we can do these things.
Right.
A lot of the curriculum around here, around the metro, is very much influenced by four-year colleges.
Right.
And that's okay, but sixty percent of the jobs that are coming up do not require their four-year degree.
That's exactly what impacted on them.
And a portion of those kids, it doesn't fit.
Right.
I mean, that curriculum base is not a fit for all kids.
Exactly, so that's why the career part of it, the components, getting that into the middle level, and the idea of these partnerships with the private sector in particular, you know, getting the agreements. Currently, we have Microsoft, we have, we have people working at Microsoft that come out and start their day at DGF at high school. So they're working with the kids directly. So the kids are getting those hands-on experiences and here's what I could be doing. So that's what we envision happening with this. We see the medical fields, we're going to have some VR rooms, virtual reality rooms, so we, architecture, drafting, the three D, all of those things can be done that way, the medical trades, the dissection, what else not. So this isn't just for somebody who wants to be, you know, construction labor.
Well, my, you know, my, my hat's off to the Morehead School District and you and any other school district in Clay County that's working together on this. Obviously, each individual school district could not have their own career academy, it just would not be affordable. So I think the fact that you've all worked together is another example of how collaboration really works in, in, you know, Clay County and, and how we work together in a lot of areas, and I, I just congratulate you on those efforts. You know, I, I remember sitting and talking with you back when, in two thousand and fifteen, I think, when that, and I, I think you got beat up a little bit back then, and I, and I, you know, and I, I, hopefully now, you know, things will work out, so.
Thank you.
Anything else for Brian this morning? Good presentation, good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming best of luck. Thank you.
Okay, we did get our bills and vouchers.
We're brutal.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Appointment of Association of Minnesota Counties voting delegates for the AMC. Steve.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you're aware, this December we have our annual AMC conference. And at that conference, we look at legislative priorities for the upcoming legislative session, and the AMC is looking for us to assign our delegates for, for voting rights for that upcoming conference. Our bylaws state that we have our, of course, U.S. commissioners, and we also have an up to additional three people. Historically, we have, we've chosen our solid waste manager, our county engineer, and also our planning zoning director. A year ago, Matt, Matt Jacobson was not here, and so we would be looking to have these eight, eight delegates up for your consideration.
I, I, I think that's, including Matt, I think that's good. The one thing would be is if they intend to be at the annual conference, because you have to be present to vote.
Yes, Colleen, I believe Colleen has set them up to be in.
Okay, all right. I would move approval of the eight delegates for the AMC.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the eight delegates, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Steve. Rhonda, request to fill vacancy for full-time social worker. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, and unfortunately, this is a child protection one again. This is one of our ongoing child protection workers who's actually moving to St. Cloud. He's been with us for less than a year, so unfortunately, we've invested a lot of training, and this is what we're seeing happening in our child protection unit. His resignation is November first, and so I'm seeking approval to replace him. But I did want to share with you kind of a exciting opportunity that we have in filling his position. If you recall, I talked with you about, oh, I'm sorry, I should have passed that out. I had some too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had mentioned that we were working closely with MSUM and Concordia with their social work students. We have been working with trying to recruit maybe juniors or early seniors to come and do variable hour case aid work with us, and so they would work alongside the social workers, helping them with supervised visits and transports and kind of engaging in the work of, of child protection specialists. We had an individual that joined us, she worked as a case aide with us for eight months. She is now interning with us and is, will graduate in December. Working with Minnesota Merit System, she is eligible to be hired within sixty days of her graduation, as long as she's in good standing and is anticipated to graduate within six months of her employment, or I'm sorry, sixty days of her employment. So she's eligible October twenty-first to be hired. And so we are really excited about the opportunity to hire her right away and then have her work alongside the exiting social worker, at least till November first, and take over that caseload. Have those opportunities very often. She, as a variable hour case aide, has already gone through the background check process that we would go through for a regular full-time employee, so that won't hold us up either. I know as a board, you've talked about if there's any opportunities to hold off on hiring folks until the beginning of the year. If we were hiring straight from the merit list, we probably would be delayed into mid-December anyway, but this is kind of unique, and we're excited to move forward if the board would approve.
Okay. Yeah, well, you know, we have hoped we could hold off on hiring any jobs until the beginning of the year, but for these child protection positions, it's been difficult at best, so, so I would support your position. Any other questions for Rhonda on this?
Is it possible to go with variable hours until the first of the year?
Um, variable hours, social work?
Yes, I mean, for this person.
Yeah, we have.
Status-wise, so we don't, so we can begin anew in January with the full time.
Um, well, it would be, we wouldn't be able to give her the forty hours a, a week under variable hour. It wouldn't be ideal.
Not that.
But.
But you know what I'm saying.
Could we, yes. I mean, we.
How many hours can they work?
I think you can do the variable hour for two months.
Nineteen hours.
Yeah, but that's got to be average over, over a year.
Yeah, over a year.
So we could have the whole next year to take that out of there then, right?
Well, it's my, it's my understanding that you could, you could have somebody variable hour for two months at forty hours, and you, and you wouldn't be.
You wouldn't be using up.
Violating any, anything, and then, and then come January one, or, you know, the first, in January, then you could switch that over to full time. You could, you know, we have the ability to do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, it's whether or not.
I think everybody knows you need this person full time, it's not.
Yeah, and what's just exciting is we would have her to be able to shadow the current worker right now from, you know, now till November first, so that's, that works.
If you could, if you could work her forty there, you know, forty hours on variable time, that'd work out.
There's, there's nothing that would, I mean, we have in our, we see that in our, sometimes in our highway department, we have people that come in there variable hour and they work the summers. You know, so it's.
I, I agree with all of the comments. I, one, appreciate the fact that we were able to get creative with this and, and recruit this way, and I think that the ability to have this person shadow's pretty, pretty awesome. But I, if we can get creative in, in making it work until January first, I'd be in support of that, but I would also, if that didn't work, be in support of offering the job now because I know the challenge to recruit for these positions, so.
Plus the training, yeah.
So.
Yeah, can you think of any, I mean, I would, we were actually meeting with her today. Like I said, she wouldn't be eligible till the week of the twenty-first via merit system. So then, if all that plays out, we would offer her variable hour till, is it mid-December? Is that considered the new year, December twentieth, or is it January?
January first.
January first.
January first, okay. I was thinking payroll, but, okay.
So I think what you're hearing from us is that we, we support your request.
So, so does she, or does this person, whether it's a she or he, does this, does this person, you know, because a lot of this has to do with, you know, the new benefits, obviously the new benefits package coming into play on the first of the year that's, you know, we've, we've designed this and needed this to help offset the expense of the implementation of the, of the work study, you know, you know, so. Is, is, are the benefits an issue? Would she be covered from, you know, like, you know?
Yeah, I don't know that. I know that she's very excited to have a position with us, and she's very excited about the work, so I, I don't.
The only thing that I, I think we need to consider is, and I know, I know what the objective of the, the board is, but to make her work for three months at forty hours a week and not make her eligible for benefits when we pay benefits to somebody that's working twenty-four hours a week on a regular basis just to save some.
Yeah, you can't do that, it's.
I mean, it doesn't seem fair to the employee, but I see that we can do it if we wanted to hire.
I guess I didn't know if that's what we necessarily meant. We just meant hiring her at an FTE versus variable hour. I mean, we'd still offer benefits, correct? As a variable now?
Not as a variable hour.
Well, then, forget it. I'm not going to make somebody work child support.
She wouldn't get any benefits.
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have someone work child support for two months, two and a half months, and then not after. No.
Well, like I said, these are tough positions with child protection, and so it's, you know, typically, we're trying to, to hold off, but I think this may be one of those.
I, I think if this was a, like, like Rhonda said, if we had to go through the merit system and we wouldn't even get somebody here till December, then that could certainly be held off. But I think with this, with this opportunity that we have somebody here, she's been through the background, she's done a great job from what I understand, and we need child, good child protection workers, and we can get this person before this, this, one that exits, exits already. I think we should take advantage of it while we can. I just don't see it's a fair thing to have somebody work forty hours a week for two and a half months and not be eligible for, for benefits.
No, we do it all summer long with a lot of people there.
Those are, those are seasonal though.
Well?
Seasonal workers.
Well, one of the morning's wishes.
Based on the conversation, I, I will make a motion to approve Rhonda's request to go ahead and do that now, and then approval to backfill should need be.
We have a second.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second it, but I, I, you know, I, you know, this, this is the dilemma, our, that we're in, and our board has, has kind of told our administration that because of this, I mean, we're going through a huge cost in this whole transition, and I mean, it's a huge cost. And, you know, I, I just, you know, I just think if, if, you know, if we could talk to this person, you know, maybe the person would be willing to, you know, to do the variable hour thing till the first of the year. We don't, you know, if you don't ask, you'll never know. And, you know, so I, I would still.
That's fine, my motion can include that flexibility.
Yeah, I, then, then I would be more comfortable in doing that, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but.
And I'm assuming she's younger, so she, she may be covered under another insurance already.
Well, that's, that's the point, she might, she might be able to have coverage for.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the request and submit it as variable hour, forty hours a week until January first, in which time that person would transition into a full-time employee unless that doesn't work out, right?
Yeah, I mean, and, but if that, that flexibility doesn't work out.
Yeah, yeah, we know you need the position, so.
Under a variable hour, in terms of the other benefits accrual of vacation cyclic, does that happen or?
No, only when you get to point five, twenty hours a week.
Okay. Is there, but she's variable hour, so she wouldn't get that.
Correct.
Is there any discussion that that could be considered in this situation where she could, or?
I think if that, if the variable hour piece doesn't work.
It, it, it either works or it doesn't. You don't want to open up another deal where one variable hour gets something. They're either variable hour or they're not.
Okay, everybody understand the motion?
With Darren before you.
Sure.
Everybody understands the motion and the second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, committee reports. Jenny.
Thank you. Last week, I attended a meeting with Commissioner Gross and Attorney Melton and our Matt Jacobson and Steve about the Watershed's Becker County's request to have an MOU for our, how we appoint their wild rice member, and it was good conversation. Historical background for me, the last time Menomen petitioned that the Board of Soil and Water Resources was in two thousand and six about the redistribution. So we have several questions, as you know, we've always appointed Becker County's request, and Commissioner Gross actually has been quite diligent in recruiting that member, so we'll set up a meeting with Becker County about possibly the end of the month, about further questions there. I attended the Lakes and Prairies Rural Transportation ribbon cutting on their new rural routes bus, was at the Barnesville Senior Center. I'm really excited about this possibility. Hopefully, we can get residents to use it and spread the news. They will be taking by appointments, they'll pick up people all the way from northern Clay County to southern Clay County to take them, to go to their appointments, and it's a sliding fee scale, based on your income, could cost five dollars to twenty dollars for all the transportation needs you would, in that day, and I can't drive my Suburban to Walmart for five dollars, so I think that's a great, great thing. I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, we had a good conversation about the possibility of purchasing a used fleet vehicle for office staff to use. They, they have several, a couple pickups there, but they're oftentimes on jobs, calling the, the planter and. Calling the, the planter and one employee got, uh, was running work errands in her, um, personal vehicle and got in an accident over the lunch hour and that, as we all know, is an insurance kind of nightmare. So, they're looking at possibly purchasing something, uh, up to ten or twelve thousand dollars and the conversation will go forward on that. Good conversation on the redistribution request that we got. Uh, they had also received correspondence on that, so we were able to discuss that. And then the question of the, uh, ability to take out low-interest loans for, uh, septic systems, we had had a conversation with them earlier this year and I can't recall where that conversation ended. If it needs to come to this board.
I think it needs to come to this board. Well, I'll get that.
Yeah, let's, let's do that because I think it's a good opportunity for Clay County residents to, uh, do work for upgrades at low-interest loans, so talk about that. I had a meeting for MetroCog with Commissioner Pepcorn from Fargo and the Director Cindy Gray with Joe Razzo from the G Greater Fargo Morehead EDC about their involvement in the Transportation Technical Committee. Uh, from MetroCog's perspective, we, uh, we really need them to at least have some sort of involvement because of the planning and processes that have to go on with MetroCog to know where they're looking in pockets so that we can make sure all studies are done. Um, and I think Joe didn't quite, uh, understand why, why the need was there. But, uh, the, the best example, the best worst example, I guess, is that, uh, we were all part of, uh, diversion planning and MetroCog had not been involved in any of those conversations. So, um, with roads or planning or road closures and so Commissioner Pepcorn said, you know, it got to the point where a year and a half ago, we realized the transportation planners weren't even part of the discussion, so we wanna make sure they're part of that. I fielded some email concerns from a family member on, uh, detox center issues. I've included our, uh, Public Health Administrator and Detox Director and Steve on that, I think, and Commissioner Campbell as well. So, uh, they'll be meeting with that, that, uh, family to kinda address those concerns. So, I appreciate the fact that they were willing to do that at such short notice. Yesterday, I went out to Rolog with Sheriff Empteen. Senator Ken Eakin was there. Clay County Public Health had a, uh, flu shot clinic for their senior citizens, uh, meeting and great input from them. They are an active vibrant bunch that are very up to speed on what's going on in Clay County. And, um, I will say, uh, between that meeting and the questions that I've fielded in the last twenty-four hours, there's some significant road issues going on. And, uh, the gravel roads particularly were in really bad shape before we had eight inches of snow and three inches of rain in the last six weeks. Um, but I mean, it's, it's bad, bad. So, I don't know if you have highway tracking later or?
No, don't have till next week.
Then I'll talk to Dave.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, I did, I had to call Dave on a couple too.
Right, uh, so they, there's some significant.
They need to just get out there as often as they can, I guess.
Right, uh, they need some bleeding. Uh, and then the other piece that came out of that meeting is, uh, Steam Thresher's attendance has grown enormously the last few years and they consistently had four-mile backups going into there and so some of those people are on the board at Steam Thresher's and wanted to know about the possibility of working with Clay County and the state on a, uh, underground pedestrian crossing. Um, it's, it's kind of a public safety nightmare with people. They had to open up parking across the road and having people cross the road and stopping traffic. And so, um, Senator Eakin was there and that would be a great bonding request and, um, I know that it would need some, some help for us. But I think that, um, they did it at WeFest and WeFest numbers are on the significant decline. And I think that we should at least start having conversations to help facilitate however we could, I guess, there. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Kevin.
I would, I would certainly entertain, uh, hearing about that too, even through highway tracking in terms of, so.
I'll, do, I can have a representative from Steam Thresher's.
Sure, I'd be, contact Dave and, Dave kinda sets up the agenda, but I think that'd be good. Uh, okay, so on, um, let's see, I gotta. Last Thursday, um, we had our Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting and, um, there were two significant topics that were on that day. The first one was, um, a landowner came before our SWAC group, suggesting that we should move the location of our transfer station. There was quite a bit of discussion there and then also, uh, Mayor Olson from Dilworth was also there. You know, and he, you know, he had, I think his concerns were more about the location of that and the traffic generated and what, and what the roads are doing and, and, you know, so we got into the conversation about those things could be dealt with through making sure we have the appropriate construction, whether it's a nine or ten-ton rose to handle those things. I think the, I, it was, we didn't take a vote on it yet. I think we're gonna still respond, uh, to the landowner. But, uh, based on, and I think Commissioner Wayland can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty certain it would have been a hundred percent support in keeping its current location.
Because of the dollars spent to keep it.
Well, not only that, not only that, but it's also, you know, when you look at the surroundings there, it's, it's, it, it fits with that area. When you, when you take a close look, we got the sewage lagoons around there and it's, so it's, it's a good place to put it. And, and it could have been very costly to, um, uh, Morehead, I think, had put in six hundred thousand dollars to acquire that, that twenty-acre land and seventeen acres of it would be needed for that project, so.
Is there a proposed alternative?
Well, hey, there, uh, the landowner didn't really suggest anything other than that it, it would be better off on Highway seventy-five and, and then of course, um, Steve from, uh, uh, the city, uh, Steve Moore mentioned that, you know, they did look at, at the site where the current, um, compost. And once, and, and I remember that cause when we did borings there, it turns out that was, underneath there's an old landfill. And so that certainly wouldn't have been an option. And then we also looked at the straight west of there on the north, would be the northwest corner of Highway seventy-five and Fifteenth Avenue. And that is, uh, property owned by American Crystal and American Crystal was not interested in giving that land up either. So, uh, it, you know, it, you know, and it's, um, you know, the discussion there was, well, Fifteenth Avenue is, is, uh, you know, with the toll bridge open, it's a corridor, you know, it's a business corridor and it's a, kinda the gateway to Dilworth and, and I said, there's, there's probably no bigger gateway to between Morehead and Dilworth than Highway ten. Highway ten, there sits a transfer station right now and all the truck traffic that goes there. So, it, we, you know, the, anyway, so that's, that's ongoing. And then the second thing, which is equally, uh, important was, uh, we had, we received a presentation from Mary Aldrich with Mincota and we're looking at a fifty-one percent increase in costs of bringing our recycled goods to Mincota. And part of that reason, uh, part of the reason for necessity for that is that the commodity prices for recyclables has just gone down the tank. Uh, if you follow this, uh, at all, not too long ago, China stopped, uh, accepting any of these materials, uh, from the United States. And it's just, it's just caused the, um, market to really go. And so unfortunately, we're, we're in that regard, but I, you know, and I, one of the areas that I suggested, we're gonna have a meeting and I think we're gonna invite, uh, Kirk is gonna invite Ben Lean and, and Kent. And I, I talked about maybe if that's the case, because what's happening, if we're gonna, you know, if recycling is gonna get to be that costly, there, there's gonna be less and less interest in doing it. For those who are really truly concerned about the environment, we better, uh, not be putting a lot of that stuff in the ground. And, and right now, the only state money that we receive for recycling is through the SCORE. And that, the SCORE, uh, funds are very minimal. There's not very much. And so we're gonna talk and see about, um, you know, the way things are going, should the state, uh, play a role in, in helping fund that recycling to a bigger degree. And we don't, we won't know that till we talk with Ben and, and Kent. Then on yesterday morning, I attended the Diversion Authority's Coordinating Meeting. Several things going on. This Wednesday, we're having a visit from Major General Toy. He's the, you know, he, so we're, we're gonna be talking about, um, recent developments regarding the project and they're gonna tour some of the current construction projects that are going on. Talked a little bit, I know Commissioner Wayland is gonna be going on behalf of Clay County to DC next week, uh, for some meetings.
Do you need board approval?
I'm glad he's doing that. Uh, I, actually, I think that's all, those expenses are all covered by the Diversion Authority, so I don't.
Right, when I went to.
Today?
No.
When I went to DC for Lakes and Prairies, we, it was covered by them.
Well, okay, well.
I don't think it is though either. I think we, we pay our own.
Oh, okay.
Expenses there, so I probably should.
Okay, well, that would be, that would be, um, well, we, when are you leaving after the meeting? Or you won't be here next week?
I won't be here for next.
We should probably prove it today then.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve, okay.
Have a motion in a second to approve the travel to DC for me. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, and then, um, then yesterday afternoon, we had the, um, construction meeting for both the jail and the LEC as well as the juvenile center. The, uh, the, the jail project, you can see right now, and I'm assuming that all of our county employees and our customers that come here are probably frustrated this week with the lack of parking. It's, it's normally bad enough, but it's even worse now because we're in the final phases of fixing up, uh, some roads and parking and by, hopefully by Friday, we'll have all of that open up and ready to go. Uh, nothing, nothing else of, uh, I mean, the, the project itself, Phase Two of the correctional facility is going well. And then we get into the juvenile center and it's just a continuation of, of, uh, new findings. But, uh, as we reported last week, it's, I mean, there was nothing earth-shattering, at least yesterday, so. Did you find a tank? No. No, so it, but it's, it's going well and we're, um, we'll be having a meeting with the regional group on Thursday. And that, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday, October ninth, uh, through ITV, I attended the Northwest Emergency Communications Board and the RAC, we have a joint meeting and we discussed, uh, cyber security issues and they formed a cyber security group for ARMOUR. It's been formed and they're gonna have their initial meeting next week. Uh, we heard updates on current grants as well as new opportunities. And, uh, the attendance policy was updated, uh, the bylaws have been discussed. I think they had a third reading of the new attendance policy, which, uh, is intended to bring more, uh, members back into the meetings, which they're not, uh, attending either in person or through ITV. And, uh, so I think after this third reading, then, uh, that bylaw will go in at the next meeting and we'll vote on it. It'll be policy. Then yesterday, we had the, uh, meeting at, uh, right here in the meeting room A and it was the Clay County Government Services Master Plan. And it was a very long meeting with Scott Feddick from Klein McCarthy Architecture. And, uh, he presented us with, uh, various options, uh, for us to consider in expansion of the county's, uh, building process and what we're looking at doing and all the various options that we have, whether it's remodeling, building, uh, trying to address the space needs that we have currently and anticipating far down the road, up to ten to twenty years in the future. And, uh, I, there's many, many options that he presented us and we're gonna have another meeting in a month. This was our third meeting out of this process and, uh, holy cow.
Hold on to your seats.
Yeah. And of course, he understands that, uh, one of our, uh, pride and things is, uh, financial requirements and all that. And so, uh, this is not something that we're jumping in and thinking we're going to spend a whole bunch of taxpayers' money. We're trying to keep the bang for the buck is in mind the whole time, so. That's my report.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I forgot one meeting that, uh, last Tuesday afternoon, we did hold a, a diversion meeting with, uh, and we had Senator Hoven and, and, um, Governor Burgum here and it was to the, to announce the, uh, a major, um, op, opportunity through WIFIA. It's a, um, funding mechanism for a low-interest loan, uh, to the tune of over five hundred million dollars for that project. That's figured to, with that, you know, and it's, and it's an application process that we were invited to do and what, but she, once she invited to do it, you have a very good, uh, opportunity to get it. And what that would do is it, it could save, uh, over the life of this thing, probably close to five or six hundred million dollars in, in the interest costs to the project. What it would do is, instead of, the projections would be, and, and these, of course, these loans are paid off using the Fargo and Cass County sales taxes that were voted approved. And with this, uh, low-interest loan, you know, that would, they'd look at being able to pay those off in the, around the year two thousand and sixty versus two thousand and eighty. So, it's a, quite a, it's a significant, uh, deal. So, that was, that was the sole purpose of that, so.
Okay, I also had that diversion meeting. That was exciting news and that will be significant savings, I think, over the life of that project. Uh, I had a Greater Fargo Morehead EDC executive meeting. We mainly had, uh, budget issue discussions and the jail and detention center, Kevin already reported on that. And, uh, that was it for me, I think, so, Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair, uh, again, I met, uh, last Tuesday with Commissioner Mojo and Gross and Mr. Melton and Jacobson on, on the Wild Rice. We have, uh, set out a, a request to meet at the end of the month and I'll, I'll let you know once we hear a response from Becker County. Uh, that afternoon, I did also attend the EPA WIFIA announcement with Governor Burgum and Senator Hoven. Uh, on Wednesday, I met with Lori and Stacy from the Auditor's Office with, with the actual Minnesota State Auditor. Uh, she was on a Minnesota tour, uh, and we were kind of talking, talking with her so she could get a better idea of the needs in the state of Minnesota. On the following day, I went, was at the SWAC meeting, which Commissioner Campbell and Wayland have discussed. On the tenth, uh, participated in, uh, management. We talked about budgets, master planning. We clarified, again, had discussions on, on the conversation we had this morning with new hires. I think the, the good part is, is I think they have understanding of the expectation, uh, from the board. Uh, again, not that it's not, uh, they can't come forward, but an understanding that if they do come forward that, uh, there needs to be a, a real, uh, need shown to do that. See, we had, uh, on, uh, that afternoon, I met with Tina Fisk, Mike Redlinger and, and Chris Polkers, uh, on the dispatch. We had some, uh, some good discussions on, on, uh, how successful that collaboration has been and, and how, uh, how best to move forward, uh, with that, JPA. Um, yesterday, met, uh, we met with them, part of our master plan, that Commissioner Haney has discussed. Uh, again, we were hoping to have something, uh, before the end of the year for a presentation for your consideration. I would mention last week, we do have a flu clinic today for our employees, uh, out of eight to four over in suite, uh, one oh five in the Family Service Center. If you have your ID and your insurance card. I did, just to touch on a topic we discussed earlier, I did talk yesterday with Dave Overbow. Uh, I think one of the things that he shared is, especially with our gravel roads, uh, we had such a late, late spring, a lot of those, a lot of our gravel roads were challenging this, this summer in healing up. He assured me that he has his employees out, uh, working on, uh, the roads to, to get them in the best condition they can be with, uh, with the conditions. Uh, we also, uh, talked with Dave in regards to, uh, in regards to the Rolog, uh, steam pressures and he's gonna reach out to the District Four, uh, M dot, uh, or M dot Director Shilowall about, uh, getting a potential meeting moving forward, so. Uh, and that concludes my report.
I just have one more thing. MetroCog is happening, having an open house at, on Thursday after their regular meeting. Uh, I believe you got an invitation from Colleen and that has already been advertised as a potential opportunity for quorum, so you can all attend. It is in the Case Building and it's a beautiful office building and it represents all of us, so great, great things. Attend if you can.
Anything else, Brian? Anything?
I don't have any questions.
Anything? Nothing?